Good evening and welcome to our, uh, only for me. Uh, today we have a politeria for special use permit. Then we'll have our agenda on my board of votes and then, uh, open floor for questions, comments, concerns, uh, residents whether here in the pool or on the. So with that, we'll start with the politeria for application of BJ, BJ in court. On going up, there's some people have been modified, they're doing through special use permit. Resolution twenty, twenty dash twenty five can also allow as a full restaurant use and if like this is possible, you read the.
Thank you, Madam Sheriff. Legal notice of special use permit in Incorporated Village of Thorac Park, New York. Notice, here at the end, and Board of Trustees of Incorporated Village of Thorac Park, New York, will hold a politeria in Village Hall, unthoughtful by Thorac Park, New York, on Tuesday, July fifteenth, twenty twenty two, at eight P M. in relation to the following application. The application of BJ, the fourth John Wayne, owner of Sommete Park located at six dash eight Marina Avenue, Thorac Park, New York, is made according to the article three, section ninety-nine dash ten, being one of the zoning coordinates of Incorporated Village of Thorac Park, New York. To modify special use permit, resolution number twenty twenty dash twenty-five, for a party room so as to allow a full restaurant use in a D-one district, the use may only be used, it may only be authorized as a special use after politeria. The structure for which said special permit is applied is situated by the west side of the Beadore Avenue, forty-sixth street, south of Tulav Avenue, and Notice Section thirty-two, block one twenty-three, and lots twenty, and twenty-one, and one twenty-six, on the Nassau County Land Tax Act. A copy of the application is on file in the office of the Village Clerk, one for whole board, Thorac Park, New York, and may be examined by any persons interested there during business hours Monday to Friday inclusive, except legal holidays from eight thirty A.M. to four thirty P.M. Now, take notice that all parties and interested citizens will begin in the opportunity to be heard in a four set time and place by the Attorney of Justice, Incorporated Village of Thorac Park, New York, Susan E. Pauls, Village Clerk, who stayed July first, twenty twenty-two, and the legal notice has been published in the official paper of Incorporated Village of Thorac Park, New York, and posted according to law, and was sent to the Nassau County Land Commission, still to section two thirty-nine dash Ellen M. of the General Municipal Board, determined to refer to the village to take action as deemed appropriate.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. I'd like to place a record that the applicant has previously filed out the name of service indicating that all names of the two of the radius of the building have a service notice. Also, I'd like to announce that the ones previously adopted resolution, terminally the application, does not have any sense of impact on the environment as defined by the statute. So, uh, the applicants would like to, uh, give us, uh, the, uh, the full use as best you can with full details, so we can just go through this once to exactly what we're asking. Do you swear, Professor Sessom, that you will be the truthful officer of the profession?
Yes, sir. Two hundred, General Turnpike, Thorac Park, Mario Bergara, D. three, G. A. R. Good evening. Just a quick summary as to how we arrived at this structure. If you refer to drawing A-one for a store plan, you will note the building is comprised of three sections. The middle section represents individuals to the teapot restaurant. The left section represents the party room. It was first approved as a standalone use by this board as well as the various board from each, um, auction parking. The right section represents the proposed on-story addition. Its use was approved by this board as well as the various board or the leave from auction parking requirements as well. Each section has a full basement for storage, with the right section having a prep kitchen as well. The individual tax, the pre-individual tax lots are reserved to one. When completed, the building will be fully sprinkled and have a monitif central station fire alarm system. In October of two thousand and twenty-one, an application was made to the various board to modify the bottom areas granted so as to allow the party room to be utilized as a full-time restaurants. This variance is granted, which brings us to the application now in front of the board, granting special use permit to modify use of the party rooms as a full-time restaurants. The reason for this request is a simple one, and that is flexibility. Flexibility to use the rest, the party room when not occupied at a private party for overflow for customers. The hours of operation are eight A.M. to four P.M. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, eight A.M. to one A.M., Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, eight A.M. to nine P.M. Sunday. Swing the teapot does not avail results to Uber, to Uber Beach, or any other takeout order we have. Ninety-eight percent of their customers are dining. The occasional takeout order is served from the bar area. Uh, there is no anticipated huge issue with trash as the existing trash room is at fifty percent capacity. Live music will continue on as usual, spotting on Saturday. You have an answer to any questions you can ask.
Thank you. I'd just, uh, tell a question, follow up on the last item we mentioned, live music. That would be indoor only.
Indoor only.
Uh, how many, if any, additional employees will be required for adding the restaurant versus?
The barriers aren't passing.
Well, you don't have to step up if you don't want to, if you want to get this point out of them.
He can step.
Okay. The fur.
Do you swear, Professor Sessom, that you will be the truthful officer of the profession?
I do. Yeah, John Wayne, thirty-three East Cherry Street, Thorac Park, New York. And I do this paper probably about four, four days.
Where in the park or do they have some different cars?
Well, right now, I have, uh, five, three percent of them live locally. And the new ones, I don't know. I have, uh, the chef and my wife, we have, uh, two of the parrot and the parents. Everybody else comes, uh, lives locally. Uh, my, and, and so might be one more employee, and if that's the case, we will, if we have the parents, if we have two part of the, the employee part of parents, we have two of them as it is, the chef, right.
Do you anticipate having any additional deliveries?
No, no. And all the deliveries come right now and go down the, the back of the restaurant. We have an entrance down there, all the deliveries we do deliver on, on, uh, on the property anymore.
Okay, thank you. Turn off my colleague on the board and we'll start with Debbie.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, just a question about the, um, party room becoming a restaurant. Have all of the market actual structural, other kinds of requirements been satisfied briefly for that new functions, both a party room and a restaurant?
The only addition as part of this operation permit that was the issue was the inclusion of brand handicap brand from the swingy bar restaurant into the, uh, party room because the change in location is such that.
Right. So, is that been completed or is that still?
No, we have just, we received it recently, so we bought the operation.
Okay. And nothing else said? Ask me that.
To the party room? No.
Yes.
Uh, trustee, uh, the.
Thank you guys for coming down. You mentioned that prep kitchens are going to be for both in, in each section.
No. So the, the plan calls for two kitchens. One to be placed in the addition on the first floor and the prep kitchen in the addition in the center. So the existing kitchen facility in the now swingy bar will give you a pay.
That would be the.
The old three section, uh, sorry.
Uh, the garbage, you said, pull the garbage, just move it over.
There's a trash room currently in the back of the building, and it's only fifty percent capacity.
And the entrance into this new room, it's older, it comes with a main, the entrance into the new dining area.
The actual main entrance will now, be once completed, will be in the new addition.
So that'll be the main entrance that you can go with the old portion of the swingy bar.
Or you can enter the party room as a private party from the outside, just if they so wish.
And I could have two entrances.
The restaurant entrance.
Just, uh, but if it's not fully happened, we see we've made a lot of that's the most recent item.
It's been.
Data, another second. Uh, trustee Stewart.
If it's not, if it's completed, it will, it will be, um, I, I know I'm not going to say this correctly, fully sprinkled.
Sprinkled.
Oh, it is the word. That's my word, okay. Um, so, when, what do you expect the construction to be complete?
At the start, yeah, we, we anticipate it starting pretty soon. I would imagine for most of the construction is completed before winter. Um, it's hope that we can get anything a little better going, that most of the work in the interior can continue with the incandescent weather if necessary.
So what are the, what are the fire safety, uh, precautions in the current party room? How's it stand?
So as it stands now, the, the building is required of an operational fire alarm system. Of course, we're adding a third section, we are required to have a fully sprinkled building, and those plans have been approved by the Fire Marshal and will be implemented.
Well, right now, we're just talking about the party room, right?
Okay, so, let's, let's review this. So the party room is part of the building.
Right.
It's one section of the building. As start with two sections that exist now, do not require a sprinkler system. Once we add the third section, it will require a sprinkler system the entire.
Thank you.
Trustee, another one.
Thanks for being here. I just have, uh, two quick questions. Will you be closing down during the construction and renovation decisions?
It's not anticipated.
Not anticipated, okay. And now you're going to have three storefronts, um, comprising the restaurant. Are there any future plans for that outdoor patio anyway, aside?
So the outdoor patio is part of this app, uh, building and application will become an addition.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, any further comments before we close the floor? Come on, here, proceed. Is there anyone here in, uh, the little hall that would like to comment on this? None? Nobody answered? Um, before we close hearing, um, directly else, good. I could suggest one favor. If you, once you get the decision, if there's something in the decision, don't wait, please go back to us before going forward and doing something that's out of the decision. Okay? So we've got a little bit of some, I appreciate that. Any other further questions on the board? I have a motion to close the hearing and, uh... Is there a?
Some.
Sir. This motion for what?
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr.
Aye. Thank you very much. Good evening. So, good evening, and, uh, before we actually go through the agenda, have you been doing recently, is there anyone here that has a question on anything that's on the agenda before we begin to move on? See, none, and, uh, I want to adjourn. This motion is to move on.
Thank you, Madam Sheriff. I would ask the board to approve minutes of the Regional Court of Justices, and it is held on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Some.
Any discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion to carry.
I would ask the board to approve the schedule of the county's payable expenses as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, general fund eight hundred sixty-six thousand seventy-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents, full fund one hundred and two thousand nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifteen cents, capital funds one thousand two hundred and eight dollars and zero cents, for a total of nine hundred seventy thousand four hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-three cents, and as of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, general fund is one million two hundred sixty-nine thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-one cents, full fund one hundred ten thousand three hundred eight dollars and sixty-one cents, capital fund nine hundred forty-five dollars and zero cents, and a total of one million three hundred seventy thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars and twelve cents, growth rates of two million three hundred forty-one thousand sixty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents.
All of theirs. Any discussion?
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye. I would ask the board to approve or ratify requests to use the facilities subject to receipt of certificate of insurance, and so you can see in the document, five lines as presented. Come with. I'll second.
Any discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion to carry.
I would ask the board to approve the National Schools Resource Association to use fire by this hall to host basic school resources officer training for September twelfth through September sixteen, and current officers, merit, and soft aid to participate in the training.
I'll offer that motion.
I'll second it and just mention that this is an extremely important function that our police officers play in our schools of school resource officer position, and it's wonderful that we are providing this training, um, it's, it's crucial to show the importance.
Any further discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion to carry.
I would ask the board to authorize a request to say this church awaits a parking unit fees in Red Millie parking lot and parking regulations along that Millie Avenue and Convent Street on Wednesday, August third, twenty twenty-two, to hold a blood drive from approximately eleven A.M. to eight thirty P.M. And on Saturday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-two, for a small fundraiser from noon to five P.M. with the same parking variance enforcement as the blood drive.
Hello, Madam Sheriff?
Any discussion?
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye. I would ask the board to approve the ratification, grant, and permission, uh, to Thorac Park Fight Office for the Training Exercise at Fifty-Sixth, Thorac Avenue, on Wednesday, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, from seven P.M. to nine P.M. And authorize Village Administrator to sign the letter of resignation to the property owner.
Some more.
Second.
Any discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion to carry.
I would ask the board to approve that the low-voltage block party application is according to section, section thirty-two dash twelve D. of the Village Code and approval of the Thorac Park Police Department.
I'll second.
Any discussion, all favor?
Aye.
Against?
I would ask the board to authorize the settlement of the subrogated claim for the state farm insurance company damages sustained to a twenty-twenty-one lien against S U D, which was hit by a Thorac Park fight parking truck at the intersection of Woodbine and Thorav Avenue on May twelfth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of six thousand four hundred forty-four dollars and ninety cents.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye. I would ask the board to accept the letter of resignation from Justin Hughes, Motor Equipment Operator, effective Thursday, July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, after eight and a half years of service.
I'll offer that resolution with our tremendous gratitude to Justin Hughes. He's been a wonderful staff and a very productive.
I'll second all of that. Any discussion? This whole?
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye.
And, uh, Justin, Justin Locke, definitely gonna miss you from, uh, every other time as possible.
I would ask the board to promote salary and rival to the position of head council in the old day program and the average rate of ten thousand seventy-five cents retroactive to July seventeenth, and to approve permanent status of Edin Borrelo Lopez as auto mechanic since he's successfully completed his six-month probationary period as of July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye. I would ask the board to authorize the village to participate in the host's cooperative bidding program at a fee of four hundred and fifty dollars, and to authorize the village administrator to sign the general resolution for various vehicles, equipment, commodities, and other services listed in the resolution.
I'll offer that.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye. I would ask the board to authorize refund requests to individuals that are unable to either attend, participate in village programs, or the call as presented.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart.
Oh, I can't think of the word. Uh, no, not that word.
I choose, we want to have that same.
No, she came in.
Sorry. Okay. No, thank you.
And Maynich Scherr.
Aye.
I didn't ask Trustee Longbody, yes.
Aye.
I would ask the board, uh, to authorize the village to enter into a contract with Thorac Park ahead for repayment of the remainder of the Revia Drive West from Revia Drive East to Tulav Avenue and from Marshall Avenue up to Sizney Avenue, and on Orchard Street from Marshall to Beverly Avenue, piggybacking off the Village of Farmingdale contract in the amount of seventy-six thousand three hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and authorize the mayor or the village administrator to sign said contract.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second. Any discussion?
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye. I would ask the board to determine that the issuance of bonds in the principal amount not to exceed three hundred fourteen thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars to finance various capital projects is a type-two action as that term is defined in secret and will not have significant effect on the environment.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye. I would ask the board to authorize various capital projects in and for the village stating the estimated maximum cost is three hundred fourteen thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars appropriated said amounts for such purpose, and to authorize the issuance of bonds in the principal amount not to exceed three hundred fourteen thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars to finance said appropriation.
I'll offer that.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye. I would ask the board to authorize the services of Johnson Controls as the energy service company for the purpose of implementing and coordinating energy-related projects within the village, where the Village of Thorac Park is interested in installing L E D interior and exterior lights, both electric, solar panels, H-back unit replacements, roof replacement, oil upgrades, H-back controls, insulation, weatherization, L E D parking light lights, and the colonial style street lights, et cetera, for the reduction of our energy needs, and where its concept of a performance contract to accomplish this goal represented cost-effective solution. Therefore, be it resolved to select Johnson Controls Inc. as the energy service company for the coordination and implementation of this project, and be further resolved to develop a specific contract in the approximate sum of three point five six million, which delineates all services and equipment applicable to specific locations throughout the village, and be further resolved that the mayor or village administrator, although to be authorized to sign such contracts on behalf of the village for a fall subject to priority view and approval by village council.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Just on this, uh, is a number of, uh, small credit projects all wrapped up into one that will not only save us money, keep your energy efficiencies, but is also going to save us time and getting a lot of progress under one shot by Johnson Controls instead of us having to manage individually over the next coming years. I'd like to thank, uh, Kevin and Aimee, Super Tenner and Aimee Walkus, and those of us, Jerry, and our, for all our victims over the past three to four months against those people, so, thank you. There's most people.
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye. I would ask the board to authorize salary increases to staff personnel which reflect an averaging increase on all essential nights of less than two and a half percent effective immediately as presented.
I'll offer that resolution.
I'll second. Uh, all for all of.
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye.
And first, I thank you to all of the heads and everyone who's pushed on the efforts that go on throughout the year, uh, not just nine to five, twenty-four seven, uh, to keep the village the way it is and the way we want it to be, and it's most appreciated by this board, and like I say, number of times, uh, we have the pleasure of representing sixteen thousand people, and we have sixteen thousand people, thank you for the love, so, just to make it up for this.
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye. I would ask the board to authorize the settlement of subrogated claim from the local mutual insurance company with damages sustained to a conflict vehicle that was hit by a Thorac Park fight car, the vehicle was incidented to a pole in front of Manuel J. eighty-one six six twenty-two, in the amount of one thousand six hundred six dollars and twenty-four cents.
I'll offer that resolution.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Comanion, aye. Trustee Chair, aye. Trustee Stewart, aye. Trustee Longbody, aye. And Maynich Scherr, aye. I would ask the board to consider prior award to Stasi Industries Inc. of the bid contract for the reconstruction of Smoother Street, Smoother Street property deal, Tinsel Avenue and Plankton Avenue, also known as the twenty-twenty-two Broadway improvements, which bid was awarded to serve to Village Board Resolution number twenty-twenty-two dash eleven, adopted June seventh, twenty twenty-two, based on Stasi's Industries' failure to provide proof of insurance in compliance with the twenty-twenty-two Broadway improvement bid requirements.
So besides what's now the draft, you have those had, uh, four, uh, and we want to give another comment on this.
Would you like to make a comment?
Can you give your name and, uh...
Good evening. Uh, my name's Chris Stasi. My name is old Stasi, Mr. Stasi. My name is Jeff Swak, the project manager. Uh, just wanted to make two words short of on the agenda this evening, absolutely common, as I apologize. Uh, for my understanding, obviously, uh, you guys want, uh, take the contract away from us because we're, we're a give, provide, and proper shareholders. It was only the last Wednesday that the final decision was made that we had a subcontract issued to have a pay-reed share company, State Farm. Honestly, the language was not proper. We've been shopping, um, can't get a legal binding new insurance policy within fine business days, it's near impossible. I was fortunate enough to have lost rights immediate from the notification from the building fall park last Wednesday, so we are working on it diligently, very capable of the job. This is all news to me because we thought anywhere from villagers to civilians up to state with the same insurance policy for seven years. We are, I am spending, I'm more likely to be spending over sixty thousand dollars more than I'm paying annually, and I'm moving forward, so we are doing something about it. We were trying diligently the last two weeks to work around it somehow, some ways to work out, and we are moving forward with. out, and we are moving forward with the new insurance policy. What we're all asking is to give us a little bit more time because we did mobilize a job already, we do have side contracts, we did try to accommodate the village and expedite the start of the job, and then we ran into this issue. Job's supposed to be started July 7th technically, and that was us again attempting to expedite the job as a whole. Village also reached out to us to try to save them money and condense the time that was projected. It was a 160-day contract, I told several of the facility managers here and representatives of Village of Flopark that we could definitely, without rushing, being safe, condensed it to easily 120 days, saving the village approximately $20,000 in engineering fees. So we, we got to try to help and work with the villages, they want to sign the contract. And so I'm here representing myself and the company that we are working and are getting a new insurance policy that will provide proper language and coverage and liabilities that the Village of Flopark requires. We are currently, and you know, to ask, we have contracts for sidewalk payments, we've been pretty on top of it, we get an inquiry, and I think we're there in less than 48 hours, whether it's an emergency or not, and so far we've gone smooth. I know we had other issues in the past with your requirements contract, so far so good. I know it's only been like two dozen POs, but we've executed quickly, clean, safe, properly, and so far, even though it's only been a short time, we really truthfully feel we have very good rapport with the village, and the village can be dealt with. So I would like to take that and share it with you.
The couple of issues that we have is we, as a board, leave once a month in the summer, and this job is, you know, five misses because of location in the school, and if it gets delayed any further, it will result in significant issues when the school opens. I don't know if someone played it for you, but they have to. You know, from the, you know, July and August is now at best starting, we're gonna have issues with this course.
I understand your concern, and removing us from the contract could actually create that problem. So we can have a proper insurance policy within a few days, legally bonded and delivered to the village. If you take away the contract, you have to go through the process, which I know you can expedite yourself in an emergency meeting, a board meeting, you sign the contract, and the company's love will provide their insurance as seminals, and even if you get a contract that's really tomorrow morning, I think, and those are ready for talks, you know, I know the D and B engineer reached out, this case scenario, you're not gonna get a guy here quicker than with going through the one-on-one medicaid of going into contract with anyone within two weeks on good note. So I feel like in the moment, we get the insurances over, we can start within 24 hours and that's guaranteed. Our quality and our safety and our MPTs are already staged, it's been staged for two weeks, we've been over these days, and we already moved, and we are, we're taking proper insurance. This is not something that we're like, oh, we don't have insurance, sorry, we can't.
We would not have followed with insurance. We would never have followed with anyone without.
I'm not saying that, hey, I'm, I'm, I'm getting the right insurance that you guys need, and that's, I'm just letting you know that.
And I believe it's not game, they dropped that to me last night, right?
No, it was the representation that this came out last Wednesday, it's not accurate, this came out till the end of June. We were back several times before then that their insurance coverage does not include subcontractors. On July 6th, we gave them a written deadline of July 11th to comply with the terms of contract required insurance, including insurance for subcontractors. July 11th came away, we kept discussing with them, possibly they were in the works, we were told they had the travel's lined up, we asked for documentation for that, and we were told they didn't have yet. So Monday, game, we told them that this evening it would be a motion to rescind and then order to the next highest response of litter. We still don't hear anything since yesterday as to whether or not they have the insurance coverage. At this moment, I know they don't have insurance coverage, I think they just stated that. They have 15 days from when they award the contract, the contract was awarded June 7th. We are well past 15 days, we are passing further extensions we gave. As you mentioned, it was mayor, it was clear, time is of essence to have this contract performed. We're now being prejudiced by not enough of the vote.
Then, I think, my, if we have to follow, like, could I show more?
Second.
Second. Do you want to read it?
I mean, I wouldn't do all this comment. There was a few stipulations where we tried to get, to get treaty, treaty became an issue with our insurance company. And that's related to subcontractors, and so we're dealing with, you're the party agent back and forth the last two and a half weeks, regardless of how we can address it. There's also discussions about removing the treaty, the treaties that are contract with your, your, your village treaty contract. So those discussions were all up until Monday, Friday of last week, and it's brought to our attention yesterday, today, that he's willing to remove the contract from us. But I, the only thing I can prove, if I can send it to you now, I can send it to you tomorrow morning, you guys can review it before you sign it at the station, if not tonight, is that it, the, the new insurance policy is in underwriting, which is not complete. They were asking us for more safety sur, sur, survey questions yesterday, so, yeah, we are getting, and I invested into a new insurance policy specifically for this village and this contract, that I have to do, doing heavy roadwork, yeah, anywhere from the village to the state, and getting it specifically for this contract and this village.
Do you dispute the timeline of the contract being one of the seven, and then only 15 days to provide documentation? Do you dispute that timeline?
I do not dispute the, for your award letter on, on the seventh, that's correct, but we didn't have a board meeting until after that, in the internal, until after the seventh, based upon discussions on the start date. I didn't sign, actually, sign the contract, I don't have the date, I haven't looked that up, but we, and we were awarded on the seventh initial, that's correct. But then there's discussions of safety, trees, timing, because that's a big problem for school, and we had that meeting really well, we have this.
And the road is a terrible straight, the shade cannot be, so, there is a motion to rescind the contract from the flow of this course, can you, Paul Wood?
Justice Balaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbow, and then Sheriff.
Aye.
Sorry. When we go back, you had a motion, you have a second?
Yes, Justice Chiaro.
Thank you, sorry.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Just one more, can I?
Yes. I would ask the board to authorize the sale of contract services in the bid contract for reconstruction of Smaller Street, Smaller Street parking field, Hinsdale Avenue, and Clayton Avenue, also known as the 2022 roadway improvements, as the next highest qualified bidder, as per the recommendation of D and B engineers, in the amount of $1,278,000, and authorize mayor or village administrator to sign said contract. How about that? Second.
Any discussion? This is mostly Paul Wood.
Justice Balaño, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart, Justice Longbow, and then Sheriff.
Aye.
That's all, thank you.
To that, of course, of the meeting, and we will now move to board with one, so, whatever may.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First of all, as we have struggled out on our fire park this night, our fire park says let's save lives, and on June 44th, our firefighters, rescue company members, volunteers, and community members join together to save the lives of others out of traditional blood drive, where 92 clients were generously donated, thanks to all. Our all volunteer firefighters and medical team continue to respond to our village and other calls. In May, it was a total of 124 calls for assistance, that's an average of four calls per day. On a number of occasions, there may be less than four, and on other days and overnights, there were many more than four. These calls are fires, home carbon monoxide related, and other, rescue and mutual aid to other municipalities that were attended mutual aid calls, calls that involved in May. Two weeks ago, the department responded to a medic fire, and has successfully contained it to the attic, with no injuries, and no extension to the rest of the house or other houses. With respect to rescue, we've got some reminders, we've had a number of calls, falls recently. We remind everybody to be careful on stairs, especially in the dark, it's leaked one hand free, they use the railings, and you can be safe. And in this extreme, please hydrate, drink lots and lots of water. We truly appreciate the work of all our fire park members, and their ability, good availability to help us 24/7, and we'd like to include in that appreciation, like you have the fire viewers here tonight, Jack Dotson, and our former chief of department, Joe O'Reilly, and thank you for your service. For the park complex works, PPW has been very busy with many different village enhancements underway throughout this summer. Fifty trees have been planted with border bags to help in this hot, dry weather, drainage fences are being cleaned for better water flow, especially in storms, and our PPW crews are out refreshing lines, bus walks, and ADA parking lines, so they're clearly visible to pedestrians and drivers. With respect to the roadway projects, reconstruction is well underway on Marshall Avenue, we trimmed COVID workers, new curbing driveway aprons and drainage are completed. Retaving that section will likely begin early August, weather permitting. Revere Drive West retaving will also take place shortly, so our community will be improving. As you also heard tonight, we rescinded the contract with Stasi Industries for the Spooner Spooner parking lot, Hinsdale and Clayton project, in reasons cited in the resolution. It is hoped that the Spooner project will commence in August with Hinsdale and Clayton followed, thanks to our PPW superintendent Kevin May, and our village administrator Jerry Manberg, and the art village attorney John Ryan of the local office. It was extremely complex, and I know consumed a lot of their time. For our chambers of commerce of our businesses, first, the Flopark Chamber of Commerce is pleased to announce the appointment of insurance president Henry Grant, your signature premier properties, and vice president Shane Harus, wealth management advisor. Past president M. Pete and his family have returned to Australia, where they will continue their community work there. Pastor Pete is thankful for his tremendous service to the Village of Flopark, including his president, the presidency for the Flopark Chamber. We wish the family well, and we will look forward to working with the Flopark Chamber, its officers and board, and our businesses in the future. Over on Code and Abidou, that Chamber of Commerce, who is well represented here tonight, with our president Renee Drilvich, our vice president Kathy Grassman, our treasurer Anne Youssef, and our social media expert, Nagellena Chen, Cardell, welcoming everyone. They have been busy, we have been busy preparing for our Saturday, October 15th street fair, which we will also just approve tonight, and very happy about that. Feature will be our amazing Flopark Consumer Management businesses, family-friendly live music, music, as I said, food trucks, mums at the Flopark lines, pumpkin patch. Lots more exciting details to follow. It's summertime, and Floparking's don't matter, so please shop and buy local and enjoy the sunshine and moonlight. If anybody's had any trouble following, I do, glasses, they don't work very well, so bear with me for one more report, and then I'll take care of the glasses tomorrow. For our Conservation Society, all of us here have long said that our Centennial Gardens is very best. Well, now, Nassau County is saying the same thing. We have just been voted the best public garden of Nassau County by the public and Black Slate Media, consortium of local newspapers, print and online, including the Adlin House 360, and the New High Park, Herald Garden, which we all know. It feels good to be the best, and we'll continue to advocate for that. For now, including Conservation Society president, Enes McHenry, the wonderful Conservation Society board, hundreds and hundreds of volunteers from Flopark and many other places, superintendent Kirk Mayford and his excellent village park staff, superintendent Kevin Ganain and his expert PPW staff, especially Larry Macentes, and so many, many others. Visit the park 12 to 5, because of gardens, 12 to 5 p.m. daily, and enjoy being the best, or take a stroll in on the Flopark's and Centennial Gardens Facebook page designed by our very talented Conservation Society board member and volunteer, Anne Moynihan. A huge congratulations and thanks go to all more excited about that to follow.
Thank you, Jennifer May. Justice Chiaro.
A couple items from our building department. As a reminder to all residents, the pools was paused, annual registrations were due on June 30th. The annual pool renewal occupation, as well as a safety inspection performed by a village inspector, is pending, sorry. If you have not submitted yet, please check your emails or visit the building department website for forms. If you have any questions or need any assistance, please call the building department. Also, as I've mentioned in the past, all air conditioning and heat pump units require a permit, and do have zoning requirements regarding the placement of the outdoor units. Permits must be filed prior to installation of the equipment. Again, please call the building department for assistance on information regarding allowable placement areas. An update on Centennial Mall project, the VCA recently rendered their decision on the applied forevariances. Their decision, which may change to the developer's original request, is posted on our village website. The project's next step will be a go for the ARP for a site comment and building review. The project is on the ARP agenda for next Wednesday, July 27, at 8 p.m. at the Recreation Center. All are welcome to attend. For our Tuesday phone, Tuesday phone will land in Rhino Residence, that homeowners have the ability to notify the department when they will be going on vacation and their homes will be unoccupied for a period of time. Once notified, our offices will then occasionally pass by and check on the locations. The homeowner will receive notifications from the offices that the location was checked and all is well, giving a homeowner peace of mind while they're on vacation. For information on this service and others, please check the village website under quick links for patient education watch. This Friday evening, my fellow board members and myself attended a flag retirement service at our local American Legion post 334. Post commander Bob Murray and fellow Legion members performed a respectful ceremony to honor many flags that have come along. Tap was played with words of respect being spoken about the symbolism that our country's flags represent. It was a very patriotic and heartfelt ceremony. I would like to thank Commander Bob Murray and all members of American Legion for having this annual ceremony, and of course, thanking for the service to our country, which is not under you. I would also like to thank, I would also like to recognize and thank our purification committee, spearheaded by Tana Sanchez, for planting so many beautiful flowers throughout our community. At this time of season, the flowers have all come alive and really beautify our village. Purchasing, planting, and putting teams together to plant these flowers is no easy task, but Donna and her team and volunteers have a fantastic job. Once again, thanks to all our volunteers. And I'd also be remiss, and I'd also thank our PPW workers for all their efforts, especially Larry and his team, for all their landscaping efforts throughout the village. Our village is a warm and beautiful neighborhood, largely a part of the park, and our stead, our assistants do a great job of also maintaining their properties. Suffering the Village of Flopark is the greatest place to be and experience all its beauty. The kickoff concert under the stars by Andy Rooney couldn't have come out better. The weather was perfect, the entertainment was fantastic, and everyone that attended had a great time. The return of these concerts couldn't have started off any better, and I look forward to upcoming concerts. I'd like to give a special thanks to our, to Alec Alexa from Tchil, from Tchilia, for arranging these concerts, and of course, thanks to all our PPW workers for providing us service before, during, and after the concert.
Thank you, Justice Chiaro, Justice Stewart.
Thanks for coming out.
Thanks for coming out. During the audience of village administrator Jerry Bamberk and staff at Village Hall, we now have the E-village items. You can sign up on our website to receive this informative newsletter outlining what's happening in our beautiful village. Recent E items include a link to the Long Island Road Scorecard for reconstruction information, as well as a calendar for events. You can visit fpvillage.org to find out how you can subscribe to village emails. I would like to also thank the Floor Park Department for their response to resident fire and disaster lately that is in my neighborhood, very close to my home. It was the first time in a long time that I've had the opportunity to watch our volunteer fire department's hard at work responding to a call when on one of our neighbors was in need. No one was hurt, and I wish every fellow resident a very quick return to normalcy. Additionally, I was really honored to have attended the unveiling of a firefighter memorial statue in the village of New High Park. It honored their resident firefighters for fifty years of service who were. What I found particularly interesting and moving was the amount of family trees, fathers, sons, daughters, grandchildren. And I'd like to thank our neighbors for all of their years of service. For our recreation center, even if you do not participate in group sports, I urge you to head to a recreation center Monday through Thursday nights to cheer our friends and neighbors as they compete in volleyball and/or basketball. You might even be motivated to join the team next summer. Although tennis is a quieter sport, there is certainly US level play happening on our grounds. Summer baseball is about to start along with District Twenty-Nine play. This season, Floor Park has secured district championship banners in the under-eleven baseball division, the under-twelve softball division, and more runners-up in the under-ten softball and senior baseball divisions. Congratulations to our players and their volunteer coaches and administrators. Additionally, we do have a job opportunity at the Recreation Center for weekend night supervisor. Details are available on the Week of the Village website. I participated in a field trip of sorts last week with Recreation Superintendent Kirk Mayford and Building Superintendent Renee Marcus, as well as members of our Recreation Committee, to have a look at another municipality's multipurpose rate to better for our decision-making with our renovation. Many thanks to the members of the Screaming Eagles Happy Program for their input and support of this project. If your child does play with water, please become a lookout for emails a little earlier than usual regarding the upcoming season. Information will be coming to you soon. As for our pool, our pool season is well underway. We have been blessed by fantastic weather since our early opening, June 30th. We are currently in the third week of our whole-day recreation program for youngsters, and the response has been overwhelming. The kids are having a wonderful time, they are well engaged, they are well supervised, and having a lot of fun. Fridays, the fifteenth, was a senior citizen brunch for our senior members, which was also well received. Unfortunately, our Pirates first movie was meant to be held last night and was canceled due to the weather. It has been rescheduled right thing next Monday through twenty-fifth. Yeah. Tomorrow is National Hato Day, Hunnu. And we are celebrating with two-dollar hatos, Gold Day won't have the pool until the supplies run out. Other dates to mark your calendar for are Residence Day, Sunday, July twenty-fourth, Tapiro on Sunday, Friday, the twenty-ninth, again, lots of supplies left. And family favorite, Grandparents' Day, Sunday, August fourteenth. A full listing of events can be found on the village's website. As for the third track and the Long Island Railroad projects, as you may know, we have an agreement regarding both compares. Once they're finished, we have begun discussions with 3TC on this topic. Weekend work will be happening on the Hudson line this weekend, as well as the weekend of August thirteenth and fourteenth. This work will be around the clock, and we will work with and meet with representatives from this project to get as much information and detail as we can to pass along to our residents, especially our most impacted residents. Administrator Bamberk, Commissioner McAllister, Superintendent Deane, and I met with a representative from 3TC, is that yesterday, Monday? Yesterday. To discuss ongoing concerns, as well as the work happening there this weekend. We were told that the exact specifications for woodwork is to be performed this weekend and will not be finalized to twenty-four thirty-six hours prior. When we receive that information, we will pass along to you. Thursday is the monthly meeting with 3TC representatives, and they call it the monthly mayor's meeting. So myself and Administrator Bamberk will be on that call as well. And we are hoping to get as much information as possible as they near significant completion of this massive, massive project. Thank you. That was my longest word for everyone.
I'll make a little moment. We do have one of our champion, ten-year softball players in the world.
Oh, congratulations.
Did a great job with the playoffs and two very tough games at the end, and we're happy to see. Congratulations on a great season.
Just in on the body.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. We spent a little while at library. Summer's here, and everybody's relaxing, enjoying the green weather. The library is still hard at work with their summer programs. Highlighting some current summer programs include Learn About Music and Technology, Teen Jumbo Speeds, not sure what that is, Chefs in the Future, Three-Time Nintendo Torments, and Baby Start for kids nine to seventeen months, and a family preschool hour, and much more. Please check the website for details, dates, and times. This past Saturday was a presentation collaboration from one of various Native American dancers by the Thunderbird Native American dancers. A very interesting hour to learn about the origin of these dances, as well as what they mean and what they symbolize. Thank you to the Thunderbird dancers for being here to entertain and educate us. Summer concerts are back as well. Tomorrow night, seven, I'm sorry, Thursday night, seven p.m. Four Ways from Sunday will be performing, the main event is July twenty-eighth. Tuesday, July twenty-sixth, the Seventy Women's Society's mobile office will be at the library from twelve to two. In just an update, bidding process is now open to the new P.E. compliant entrance on the front of the library building. The bidding process for clothes will extend. Construction is still targeted to start beginning of October. And as a reminder, www dot floorparklibrary dot org will have all these events in place. For Four Doors Studios, we're happy to see the productions up this summer, and they're getting close to pre-pandemic levels. We will be announcing these programs when completed and the year dates are set. Once again, www dot fourbs dot org for dates and times, as well as a key list of shows. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee, on the body. As you can see by the lengthy board reports, even though we're only in July, there is a lot going on. Thank you for all of our donations and money. With regards to roll out, as we said, if you have people involved, look out for email about the other season. I will also suggest that for people who may be interested in how to look out for it, because it is a great league, great leadership, and if your child does not know how to skate, they may be interested, they have a great program, and a lot of kids will come through that program that they'll escape or enjoy the ice hockey for many, many years because they started with the Screaming Eagles. Also, I don't remember the date, but Trustee Chiara, every mayor provided himself, attended the Bridge Church's ceremony for a goodbye to Pastor Pete. It was a beautiful ceremony. Pastor Pete is a really great, great pastor, he involved a lot of good doors, and he said, definitely be missed by the church and also by the Chamber of Commerce, especially. He did a wonderful job at the Christmas tree light this year. We got to find some replication of that energy on some of our villages. With regards to, I'll tell you a couple of things. You may have noticed that there is work on the pony track, which is supposed to paint the avenue. What is happening there is they're replacing dirt track with this synthetic track. One of the benefits of that is especially for people who live over there is during the winter, it's cold, or with the snow, tractors have to circulate that track twenty-four hours to keep the dirt from freezing. With this synthetic track, I hope all that the track will happen to be all twenty-four seven, and it'll be better for the horses, but for the neighbors who live there, so they can see their tractor all night long. Also, they are putting up new fencing for a long painful avenue network install. Also, on June 30th, the governor signed Assembly Bill A-1005, and Senate Bill 8954, with which authorizes the village of Floor Park to issue a parking permit program. We may remember back at one of our general board meetings, we brought up the topic with consideration of concern that when the Elmont train station is open fully, both westbound and eastbound, that people may find their way to Floor Park, Parkland Streets, and Hot Dog Train. We still have that concern, and we will see how it goes. But if it does become an issue, we now have this tool in our tool belt that we would be able to issue permits for residents. Primarily, the West End map is on the website, there's a billboard just the West End, to allow residents to park on the street, but not non-residents. So want to follow that, we could take a wait-and-see approach, see how it goes. But we will be talking about what the program could look like, and then be able to institute it when it is necessary. And I'd like to thank Senate Cabinet's office, Senate Women's Law Office especially, and those administrative members of the workforce. It's a lot of work to get a bill passed, even with some of this, not back and forth. So much appreciated. And with that, I'd like to ask for our motion to close board meeting before we open the comments.
So.
Say.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone here who has all has a question, comment, concern? Okay. Good evening. Yeah.
Renee Drolich, fifty-six, on the Shuikie Floor Park. I'm a business owner of Coker Avenue, as well as the president of Coker Avenue Chamber of Commerce. Here tonight, I will lift Kathy, Vice President of the Chamber, and we have some concerns in regards to the safety on Coker Avenue in regards to the terrible accident that took place on Sunday. Our chamber discussed in the past the possibility of us to receive some protection in regards to the head-on parking on Stu Manor Side, as well as Floor Park Side. Our stores are horrible to situations that happened this past Sunday. I'm on the avenue for about eighteen years now, and I've seen terrible accidents for that stand out. My building, fifty-eight Coker Avenue, before I opened it, and her building at the time, apartment right to the front, this Sunday, my other building, seventy Coker Avenue, was also, you know, we haven't quite had it yet. So luckily, these two accidents that I'm discussing, they didn't hurt anyone in the building, but Sunday, someone was hurt pretty badly. So in efforts to protect our stores, our patrons, and those, our employees in that matter, we just want to see if there's a possibility with the support of both villages. And of course, we know it's a county, we want the proper steps on how to get some type of barriers in front of our stores. They don't need to be gigantic, or they can be decorative. I'm sure there's options, there's other villages that do have them. And we just want to find a way to have that done. We love all the stores, we love everything on Coker. But I think, the big thing was we saw somebody get hurt in the building Sunday, and it really did bring both villages together, because it started on Floor Park Side and shifted over to Stu Manor Side. I just, if proper barriers, guardrails, or things of that nature were placed properly, connecting over there on Coker, and most of the property parks do have some kind of guardrails, barriers, and I know it might not be aesthetically beautiful with Floor Park, but someone's going to get killed, the same first armed stuff for the fifth one that's had it. And can you see Fenton isn't the way to go? And it's adding, just everyone responded really well, you know, first responders were there, and thank God that we do have such a great community of people that were able to handle the situation. It just, not that it wasn't bad enough, but it could have been so much worse. And it's just, we're getting busier, our community is busy. We have two lanes, you know, the Floor Park side and one lane, just to the manner, head-on parking. There's fender benders all the time, my hero is on my seat all the time. Major accidents is one thing, but the amount of people that come through this major avenue, there needs to be more. I know speed bumps are problematic, it causes up, it causes traffic with the train. But there's got to be something, whether it's cameras or, and it's bad. The detectives are asking all of the merchants for footage. And if you have parking lots with a public parking lot, you're not on private property, it's really important that everyone's cameras are working. That should be something that should be enforced. I'm a business owner, I also own my properties. I have cameras, and they work, so it wasn't in front of my fifty-eight Coker, otherwise my cameras were recorded. But if you have a parking lot, and there's people in and out of the parking lot, cameras should work. It just needs to be more security, more presence on an avenue that runs through so many areas. Someone is going to get hurt worse than what already happened on Sunday. So at this point, I'm just easily asking, what steps? How can we do this as a village, two villages, our chamber? I know we have to maybe get in people from Nassau County, but we just want that support so we can run our businesses in a safely, manage our customers, you know, feel safe on the avenue. Thank you.
I understood, I mean, you have a rather concerned, and it's all too, now village superintendent and office commissioner, obviously, Stu Madder, Mayor, he kind of legislates offices on Coker Avenue too, right?
Great, and if you could, if there are meetings, can we please know about it? Because I would like to present, Kathy would like to be present, our chamber would like to be present. We really want a positive way, we want something to come about with this and make a change on the avenue. Please, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your service.
The other thing is the illegal turns. Everybody knows about certain areas, you're supposed to make certain turns, but the signs just need to be better and placed, especially the, yes, the other thing with the new construction. This is going to be the one, and I'm very sorry what happened, how it happened and whatnot.
I'm sorry, the new construction, the sign began with a new construction or?
I think people, I think people said.
I understand it's a new construction.
So it works when it's built, when the building is built, and there's more, there's more traffic.
Oh, everything's, okay.
There's mass turnings. I think things need to change before, like, these are the things that can be done. Got to be a way, and I've spoken to people, and I get the, oh, I've spoken to them.
And I've, I've spoken to people, and I get the, oh, absolutely. They're, 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 there should be, because, you know, there's private property across the way, and they're a parking lot. It says it looks so great, but I'm sure there's better options. But if there, if this parking needed to be, there should be no reason why they can't be something in between them. So I just wanted to try to find out that way to have that done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here?
I lost my COVID status, but I don't see anybody.
Oh, yeah, it is, yeah, it's, yeah.
Yes, okay. I don't see anybody.
All right, with that, thanks for coming out this evening with the rest of the summer, and thanks to your folks.